We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond. Crop.
Here.
Rick.
Here.
Voorhees.
Here.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to excuse this Hammond. Support.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Agenda item four, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Are there, I don't see any on the agenda, but are there any from the commission? Okay, seeing then we'll move on to adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Crop, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond. I'm sorry.
It's okay, forgive it.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Did I say Fournier? Yeah, you did.
Okay.
And she said yes. All right, this is the portion of the meeting where we invite the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. First, we'll have those in public come on up to the microphone and then we'll address those on Zoom. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Linda McGrath. I met you a couple of weeks ago when I interviewed before everyone. I just want to say it's an honor to be here today, and I know you have a very difficult decision ahead of you because you had very many well-qualified candidates. I did want to just clarify, I saw the summary sheet and the agenda packet with regard to our bid that we would be charging for copy charges. We do not charge for copying unless we have to send it out to an outside source. So our costs, it's only if it's an out-of-pocket cost, a courier fee, a filing fee, a deposition transcript, we would, we would bill for that. But I appreciate the opportunity. I didn't get my address, 43557 Hillsboro, I'm a resident of Clinton Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else would like to address the commission? Anyone on Zoom? All right. We'll go ahead and move on then to administrative responses to issues or questions raised during previous meetings. I don't see any on the agenda, anything, Mr. Shipman? Okay, we'll move on to approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the minutes from the City Commission meeting for October 16th, 2023.
Support.
Okay, any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Hey, General Business 9A, second public hearing for downtown maintenance assessment. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to open the public hearing on the special assessment for the downtown maintenance program.
Support.
Okay, any questions or comments? Call the roll please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Mr. Shipman, do you want to go ahead and?
The first public hearing on special assessment for downtown maintenance program was held on October 16th, 2023. The second public hearing is scheduled for tonight, November 6th, 2023. The purpose of the first hearing was to address the necessity for the project. The purpose of the second hearing is to review and confirm the special assessment role as prepared by the city assessor.
Okay, this is the opportunity for the public to address the public, sorry, the downtown maintenance program. This is a special assessment on the down, specific downtown area. If anyone like, would like to address the commission at this time about this issue, we will, we welcome you to the microphone. All right, hearing none. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission?
I move to pause the hearing for the special assessment for the downtown maintenance program.
Support.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the motion? Okay, call the roll please.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yeah.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the special assessment for downtown maintenance.
I move to confirm the special assessment role numbers 23 dash, number 23 dash 04.
Support.
Questions or comments on the downtown maintenance program? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Uh, Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, and now my agenda is completely gone, so let me, all right, we'll go to 9B, the fire chief contract. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Crop, I move that we confirm the city manager's appointment of Danny Reynolds to the position of fire chief.
Support.
Right, Mr. Shipman?
Pursuant to the Mount Clemens City Charter, the city manager's appointment of Danny Reynolds to the position of fire chief is being presented for city commission confirmation. Mr. Reynolds has 27 years of previous fire department experience, six of which were in the capacity of fire chief. Mr. Reynolds served as the McComb County Community College Fire Academy Program Manager and served as Training Coordinator for State and Michigan Bureau of Fire Services. Mr. Reynolds has earned an Associate of Applied Science degree in fire science and is a graduate of the Fire Staff and Command Program from Eastern Michigan University. Mr. Reynolds is administration's preferred candidate for this important role because of his background, knowledge, skills, and experience in the fire service. Mr. Reynolds' annual salary will be $75,000.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman? All right, seeing none, hearing none, call the roll please.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes. Okay, 9C, RFP for legal services.
That's these, yeah.
You're all.
Move to approve the selection of Kirk Huth Lang and Badala Menti for the provisions of general counsel, prosecutorial, labor, and employment city attorney services effective 30 days after the execution of an engagement letter consistent with the terms and conditions of the city's request for proposal and the proposal selected.
Support.
Okay. Mr. Shipman?
On August 1st, 2023, an RFP was sent out for legal services. Interested parties were able to submit proposals under four areas of expertise: general counsel, prosecutorial, labor and employment, and assessing services. Proposals could be submitted for one area or up to all four areas. The proposals had to designate a separate attorney for each area to be assigned to the city. The firms were required to show the attorney had expertise in the area assigned. Proposals received by the bid opening date were distributed to the commission for review. On October 25th, the commission conducted interviews with four different firms that submitted proposals. The following motion will need to be filled in with firm names and areas of expertise. If more than one firm is chosen, additional motions will be necessary.
Any questions or comments?
It was a very difficult situation, a different, difficult decision. There were some very well-qualified people and it was, it was difficult to make that decision, but we thank everyone for coming in and applying.
Absolutely. Uh, anyone else? All right, call the roll please.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
A 9D, Fishback Engineering Amendment. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Rick.
I'm sorry.
Back to 9C.
Move to approve the selection of Hallahan and Associates for the provision of assessing city attorney services effective 30 days after the execution of engagement letter consistent with the terms and conditions of the city's request for proposal and the proposal selected.
Mayor Crop, I second.
I feel like you were the disclaimer on but thank you. Jeffy, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Shipman, oh, you know, I guess you don't need to read it again.
No.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Uh, call the roll please.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll go to 9D, the Fishback Engineering Amendment.
I move to approve the design and construction, whoops, professional services agreement amendment with Fishback Engineering as presented.
Support.
Mr. Shipman?
On May 15th, 2023, the city commission approved an agreement with Fishback Engineering to begin the design phase of the connection to the Great Lakes Water Authority. This agreement was a retainer to allow Fishback to begin the work based on their normal hourly rates until the final project was chosen for formal design. There is now a design plan in place and before you is an amendment to the original design agreement. The amendment is based on the American Society of Civil Engineers Design Curve. This is the same curve that AEW has historically used in their contract with the city and many of their other clients for construction projects that are greater than $100,000. Using this curve for design or for design fee allows for additions or deletions by the owner during the design phase without renegotiating the contract. This is due to the design fee being directly related to the awarded bid amount. The attached amendment has been reviewed by the city attorney and the city engineer.
And we also have Maria Sedke from Fishback here, in case anyone does have any, any specific questions about the proposal. Is there any questions or comments from the commission? I would just like to add that Maria, being here almost every day, I see that Maria and, and Mr. Shipman have an incredible amount of communication with one another and she's working with Kyle and everyone else, Jeff and the team. It's an incredible undertaking, all of the moving parts with this project to connect to the Great Lakes Water Authority. So, thank you for all your work, Maria, and thank you. She's done an incredible job of trying to see all of these parts come together and make this happen, so thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, we'll go ahead and call the roll.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Okay, 9E, 163 Court Sale. I'm saying a motion?
Move to authorize the sale of the vacant city-owned lot at 163 Court Street to Kevin Sharber for the amount of $500 and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the document executing the sale.
Support.
Mr. Shipman?
City administration is recommending that the city commission authorize the sale of 163 Court Street to Mr. Kevin Sharber for the amount of $500. Mr. Sharber resides at 165 Court Street. The city purchased 163 Court Street in 2022 via tax foreclosure and a residential structure that was on the lot and since been demolished. Sidewalk and site restoration was recently completed. The lot is unbuildable due to its size. If approved, the city attorney will prepare the appropriate settlement statement and quitclaim deed.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, call the roll please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, agenda item 9F, juror parking. I'll enter, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the extension of free one-day parking for jurors in the Rosco parking lot through January 1st, 2024.
Oh, yeah.
Support.
All right, does anybody have any questions or comments on this one?
How's it going so far?
Um, this is definitely an option that we're trying to pursue. It may be that we need to get in front of the Board of Commissioners at this point to formally request uh, the board to, um, to, you know, to, to pay basically what we would lose in terms of revenue for the, uh, so is it a long shot? But we're gonna try because we can't, at this point, see, you know, it's a deficit kind of situation, obviously, so we have anecdotally heard from some of the stores that, you know, they definitely during the break of the jurors have seen traffic in downtown. Now, it's hard to know, is it because of the summer or is it because of, you know, it's hard to quantify the actual impact it has, so um, so we, we are gonna try and see if the Board of Commissioners and hopefully, um, they, they have, they keep saying to me, what can we do to help?
Send money.
And so I think this is a very specific way. And it does, um, and Mr. Forlini, the county clerk, has definitely said that, you know, the jurors seem in better spirits and, and are having, he's, he seems to think a better experience when they go and when they don't have to pay for parking. So he is going to support it and come to the Board of Commission meeting as well. So hopefully us going together as a united front in a partnership type of situation will maybe help this along, so we think it's about, let me say, about $50,000 that we're gonna ask for. So.
Yeah, it's hard to quantify the data, right? It's hard to quantify the impact. It's also hard to quantify the loss because it's spent such a short period of time. It could be due to a lot of things, but we have a rough idea of how many jurors are actually average per week. And then we know approximately how many of those are taking advantage of this right now at this point. So we can kind of come up with a dollar loss figure based on that, and we got to incorporate, what did we lose in tickets, you know? And then those people that are utilizing this, would they have parked in the street had this not been available, which is a dollar an hour versus 50 cents an hour? So I mean, there's a lot of variables that come into play, but we think we could, we could come up with something near that dollar amount, that's something that would work for both parties, so.
Oh, do you want to read that?
I just thought maybe so people know.
On June of 2023, the city commission approved a three-month free juror parking trial. During the trial, jurors were issued a one-day free parking pass for the Rosco lot. The intent of the program was to increase shopping activity in the downtown area. The program has had a positive impact on the downtown district. The downside is the decrease in revenue from the parking fund. Administration has reached out to McComb County to negotiate a cost-sharing agreement to offset the loss in revenue. McComb County is receptive to the idea. Administration is recommending to continue the program through January 1st, 2024. Now, this will boost activity during the holiday shopping season and allow more time to gauge the benefits of the program while a cost-sharing agreement is negotiated.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Call the roll please.
Um, Fournier.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to purchases of payments and invoices.
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Cover letter, right? All right, questions or comments?
Were these both planned for expenditures?
Which ones are we?
The two, well, the Fishback one is the, is that, was that planned for or both of them? Yes, and the bad tech.
Bad tech was planned for, is actually part of the capital improvement plan, is actually finishing up a project that was started years ago. Fishback, I think, and I can speak more to it if you want more, that came into play when Ego required that that study be done, and, and they had done it in the past. So they already have all of the data and the knowledge to, to get this done to satisfy Ego requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, call the roll please.
Uh, Crop.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yeah.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Okay, I'm seeing nothing on the consent agenda. We'll move on to the city manager's report. Mr. Shipman?
Landscape Services installed new decorative and holiday lights this week along both sides of North Main Street from Cass Avenue to Market Street, including trees and light poles. This is the third phase of the downtown lighting programs spearheaded by the DDA and supported partially through a county placemaking grant. Also, a thank you to the Department of Public Services for assisting with these efforts. The city will be offering a free after-three parking promotion again this year for the entire downtown area from November 17th through January 1st. Reminder that city offices will be closed on Friday, November 10th, 2023 in observance of Veterans Day. Please be advised that trash pickup will run on schedule. Please remember, do not take or blow leaves, rake, excuse me, rake or blow leaves into the roadway. Doing so is against the law and could cause an accident. Election Day tomorrow, November 7th, 2023, polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. While Clemens Parks and Recreation Department is currently gearing up for winter classes, winter class registration starts on December 1st. Watch for upcoming winter events on our website, Facebook, and Instagram. The city's website features great photographs from our residents. If you have photos of our beautiful city that you want to share on a city website, email senior producer Patrick Linnaberry at linnaberryp@mtcps.org. Upcoming events Friday, November 17th, a longstanding holiday tradition returns. The 32nd Annual Christmas Open House featuring tree lighting and a visit with Santa and Mrs. Claus at 6:00 PM. Guest appearance by Mickey and Minnie Mouse, free horse-drawn trolley rides, children's activities, crafts, and more. And the 48th Annual Santa Parade is on Saturday, November 18th at 10:00 AM along downtown Main Street. The lineup is just about set. Volunteers are still needed to be costume characters or to help in staging areas and other parts of the parade. If you want to volunteer, please sign up at mountclemensantaparade.com. I want to send out a special big thank you to Commissioner Hammond and Commissioner Voorhees for their service on the city commission. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I know we will all miss you. Good luck with all your future endeavors. And a reminder that there will probably be many openings on some future boards and commissions. I certainly hope to continue my service to the city.
Very good. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman? All right, seeing none, and we will move on to the second opportunity for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the commission. If you have any questions or concerns, we ask that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and abide by our two-minute rule. If there's anyone in public who would like to address the commission, we invite you to the microphone, and then we'll go to the Zoom meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission? All right, anybody on Zoom? Okay, we'll move on then to Commissioner comments, and we'll go to Commissioner Campbell first.
I just want to say that if, as residents, if you have a concern on anything from blight to anything that, please contact any city commissioner. Don't assume, or anybody at the, at the city, don't assume that it's gonna be taken care of because it might not even be on the radar screen of code enforcement or anything else. So don't be afraid to contact any commissioner or city administration regarding a concern or issue that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fournier.
I just want to thank Glenn and Rashida, she was here up to call. But it's been a pleasure serving on this commission with both of you, and I will miss you very much for the next two years that I'm here, so wish you a lot of enjoyment with this time as you, I'm sure we'll see you around the city though, and you'll be involved. We'll miss you though.
Right.
And I'm gonna do another special shout-out to a very special lady who is such a part of Mount Clemens. Happy birthday, Ruthie Stevenson. You are truly, truly a Mount Clemens city treasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rick.
All right. So, uh, city managers stole my thunder couple things, but I would like to say, uh, I saw that, uh, Mount Clemens School District is, uh, raising money to do a turkey giveaway for, for those in need in the community. Uh, the Seventh Committee and TCB Youth Mentoring are starting their Coats for Kids drive again, because maybe fifth, sixth one at least. Um, I'd like to welcome Fire Chief Reynolds to the team. Uh, there will be a Veterans Day ceremony at Clinton Grove Cemetery on 11/11 at 11:00 uh, in the veterans section. Sorry, said about the Santa Parade and the volunteers. I'd also like to thank those that are stepping down from the commission. Um, thank you for your years of service and your mentorship. Uh, I expect you'll find plenty of ways to occupy your time, but if you don't, there are plenty of boards and committees with openings available, more information available on our website. Uh, but no, seriously, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Right.
And, uh, thank, thank you Rashida as well, um, and that's all.
Thank you. I'm gonna skip Commissioner Voorhees and give him the last say. Uh, Commissioner Dempsey.
I echo what everyone else said. Glenn, I know you're gonna be around and you're gonna keep being active in the community as you have for so many years, so it was a pleasure sitting next to you the last couple of years. And, um, have fun, but in what you're going to do, and Rashida's not here, but I want to thank her for the years that she served also. It's, you know, it means a lot to the community when people step up and do this job. It's not always the most pleasant job in the world to do, but we need people that really have a heart for Mount Clemens and want to see, um, things happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, don't forget to go to the Santa Parade. Sounds like it's gonna be a lot of fun. I think you secured your Santa, I hope. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I wanna, I want to echo, of course, everyone, what everyone else has said, but I would like to, um, thank Commissioner Hammond and Commissioner Voorhees. It was, um, we, we came on together in very new roles. And I felt like we all gave each other a fair shot when we started, and that was not the easiest things to do. Everyone comes on with preconceived notions and, you know, whose side and what, what, what are you gonna do in the political divisiveness and all of that? And I felt like that was not the case here, and we really all came together as a team, and that, um, is something that's so valuable and rare. And I know that it took effort, and so thank you for doing that, and thank you for being a part of the team. Uh, I really appreciate it, and I really appreciate the fair shot to become friends and to become colleagues, so, uh, and I'll see you at Black Cat. And, uh, so now I'll shut up. Oh, don't. Yeah, I'll, I'll continue to pay cats. And now I'll give the last word to you.
Thank you. Uh, this is my last hurrah as an elected official. Uh, I want to thank the citizens of Mount Clemens for giving me the honor and the privilege to serve as city commissioner for the city that I love. Thank you to the mayor, my fellow commissioners, and to the staff here at City Hall for always being helpful and considerate. And last but not least, I want to thank my wife Monica, my daughters Allison and Erin, my son-in-law Kenneth, for the support during my term. And now, once a Clemite, always a Clemite.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Anyone questions or comments? All those in favor.
Hi.
Good night, everyone. Night, evening, good night, everyone.